I hear about a call to see a parts of Oklahoma Works Center Tuesday, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. To all of our guests, thank you for being here today. And to get started, Councilman Max, if you would leave us an invitation and we'll follow the pledge, the stability pledge. And I would invite you to stand and pray your prayers. We pray in our.
First of all, in the everlasting Father, thou art God, and God known. But we come today on this beautiful day in these tablet halls as faithful stewards of the city of Parsville. Lord, we realize that it is in you that we live and move and have our name. But we pray now, thank you for all the presence that you bestow on each resident and citizen and the people that come through the city of Parsville. We ask you now to have your holy presence come in this meeting so we can do the things that are right and fair, just and pleasing in your sight for every citizen, every section, and the city of Parsville. It's an evil world and terrible times that we live in, Lord. We pray for the war torn earth and thank you for your divine protection for the city of Parsville. We ask you to keep us in the up there and on the good of this of Jesus Christ in his name and glory.
This is the flag of the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody know that? Yeah, let's just get it to the night. Too many Google search results to know what's the right one. Yeah, y'all, let's, let's just all be simple here. Can we delete him a little? Okay, well, Mr. Manager, kick us off with some pickleball content.
Yes, sir. So you guys all should have in front of you, or you got my email the other day about what are the options we have for us? So we've been looking at this for quite some time, figuring out what the best approach is. As we know, we have a very vibrant and excited pickleball community. I'm not sure where they are today, I said they were just coming. But we wanted to look at some options. And so we looked through the city, and of course, we have the Byron tennis courts, and then we have these Lawton tennis courts, which are on the street right here. And Lawton Park was done with, has a regular asphalt, a regular tennis court, and then also has what's known as a versi court. It's a interlocking kind of plastic material that was supposed to be a little more, give a different type of feel to it, like a play court in between. But it's not fully up as we expected, and it has several years old, and it's not being used, from what we can tell. It's not being used as far as we can tell. So Lawton became kind of a logical choice for us, it's in the pickleball center area. It gives some separation between the two, so we're not having to worry about scheduling, which is part of the reason we moved away from fire league, although that is in your part one option for you guys. And we looked at what is the kind of overall health of the courts. We essentially have two different options for you to look at. One is resurfacing the two existing courts, taking up that versi, which is really like a big pad that's on top of it, and resurfacing all the asphalt. It is a thinner layer of asphalt when it was put in, so it's not like a, it's not going to hold as well as if you were stripping down to something else, but it is a more economical choice. And for us to do that and resurface both courts, giving us six pickleball courts, would cost about thirty-five thousand dollars. We did receive a second quote to just do the asphalt and have to come back over with another company to do the pickleball, and now we've been around forty, forty-five thousand dollars, and that was in your packet, but that was two separate, no separate work together. The second option, or third option, is to completely strip the entire area. We had some difficulty finding people who would be able to work with that kind of whole area. We'd have to take up quite a bit of fencing to get it done. And what we were looking at doing is actually moving to eight courts, and the cost does go up because of what we're doing. We resurfaced an entire area with asphalt. The cheapest thing was actually working with two different companies and getting it for about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. It goes from a hundred and twenty-three to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, given this eight courts. It's a little tight if it's seating seating in at that point, and you need to have grass stripped in between. But that's kind of where we wanted to start the conversation. What do you guys feel like you want to do? The, we staff, we're putting this on the agenda tonight for the thirty-five thousand dollar option. We feel like that's a good start, to get a start at six courts does offer some opportunities for the others tournaments, some tournaments, and it has, of course, options to expand in the future. So all this is expandable going forward, and it also gives us some more opportunities for us to see it in the grassy area, which we like. Now, if we can certainly talk more about what the A courts are, or would you want to start with that?
Well, I know, first, I want to say thanks to you and all the staff for getting all these quotes. I think the particular dialogue that we worked on was done with in quite a hurry. So thanks for all that work to get those, that information, those options available for us. Questions or comments? Of course, for the, oh, like, you guys that are here, of course, this is an exciting thing. I love the citizen-led initiative. Obviously, the thing we have to consider is that this is a budget, and, you know, it's all about laying parties of how much we're going to spend where. So that, that's really the decision we have to make, but we really appreciate your vigor and interest in making ours better. It's gonna be, it'll be cool. Any, any one of those options would be a nice addition to it. Any other comments, questions?
Yes, yes, I agree. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the pickleball fans and team for coming this morning for your presentation of pickleball. I have not yet played pickleball, but I see the enthusiasm, I hear about your about it a lot. And right now, we have so many things that need to be done in the city that have been, you know, have not taken place for several years. And I suggest, and I would like to start at the sixing of courts, with the ability to be able to expand out. That would, would that give you all sufficient space to hold the tournament?
At the start, eight would be better, but six is definitely a start.
Without spectator seating, would you be able to have a good tournament on the A courts? Or would, would, would seating or no seating really interfere with the function?
No, people bring lawn chairs.
How many tennis courts are we going to rehang then?
We will still have the six at Byron, we have it currently. And I did include, just for, so we did start with looking at Byron Park. We are, we still have two pending park grants to get those tennis courts resurfaced, as well as the track, walking track resurfaced. And in that resurfacing, we can look at restriping, but that kind of, restriping in a way. That does kind of create some problems. I know there's concerns on the tennis side, there's concerns on the pickleball side, but what it is, it's not, it is painted, so it's not been stretched. We'll get in the way of the ball now, things like that. But a lot of, you know, cities will do that as a way to kind of just get it over, so to speak, get the pickleball option there. It's not really designed for those tournaments. This is a designated pickleball spot, this could be designated pickleball spot going forward. It would be a spot that could be expanded, there's lights out there, so really, it's free play. There's no need for any kind of scheduling or confusion with that tennis courts. So this really does, in addition, they also will still have the overall option at Byron, at T D Thomas Center. So we will still have six pickleball courts, or six tennis courts, and then actually more Byron, or more pickleball courts going forward.
Well, I, I like that because I don't want there to be contention between the tennis and the pickleball players in two separate locations, that would make that good. And with the new start at six courts, I think that's a good start.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, for what it's worth, on Wednesday nights and Saturdays when I work with T D Thomas, the foot traffic is unbelievable. Personally, I'd like to see us pull the band-aid off and start over and go to eight courts down there. Put us something nice down there, and not say scratch off the list, but I think that'd be something everybody would be proud of.
Doing it right.
And doing right, and, and of course, the city manager, there would be a little leeway for possible expansion out of the road. But if the footprint of a low A courts with maybe some seating or whatever, that's, that's where I'd like to stick things on the public.
Sure.
Yeah, and I concur on that too. Like, I was talking to the city manager, he understands that we'll have to do a little bit and then have to go back and do some more on that kind of while we're down there. Go again and surface it.
Done.
And we, we find money for things that we want to know where we can plug in for this, for this, for this, and we can do eight.
Approximately how long, if we did six or eight, would leave before they'd have to be resurfaced? Was it the, the lifetime expectancy?
I'm, I'm not quite sure of the lifetime, if you could get me back on that. I'll have it for tonight before we go, I'll talk to the tablet group, which should be the ones actually giving the resurfacing. But I imagine the same length as the tennis court, and I think we've gone from six to seven years on the courts. Plus, have a check, we got five to six. The resurfacing, for keeping sure it's up to speed, is, is a lot different than what we're talking about here too, is we have to lay the foundation. These, these courts are, they have some cracks from it, the substrate underneath it probably needs to be redone. And that's what will be addressed, we're talking about doing the reasphalt, and then the coating on top of this will need to be maintained. So this is going to be a main ongoing maintenance for us as well. So no matter what we do, we will have the ongoing costs going forward.
And right now, these funds are scheduled to come out of ARPA funds?
Right, because of the, because we did not budget for it this year, we did talk about it in the budget process. My suggestion would be through the ARPA monies, in fact, just the conversation with the ARPA, we're coming up on twenty twenty-four, they have to be obligated by. We are very fortunate to be able to have this in the local government investment pool, so we'll do it well there by John Intersoft. But we do need to have money obligated and spent by twenty twenty-six.
No, plenty of time.
Plenty of time to spend on it, yes, sir.
With the rest of the four there, you're just going to do the six anyway, you're talking about the research, and just taking over the versi court?
That goes off.
The versi court is a path, it's on top of this, that's a complete, and it comes off and then we're down to what we had. It's two asphalt courts underneath there, and they're both at the same level, the versi court is actually a tad higher because it's, but it's, it's.
The old one is still under.
The old, the old, it's still asphalt underneath there, correct. And I don't know if you can see, I mean, there's two, two, about three or four fences that line each side of this court, so it's going to be taken up. There is a bench under those, you can see, we'd have to access it from the, is that presswood, presswood sides, we take down the iron rod, our fences in there to get in there. And we talked about speed, the reason why, we have this on the agenda tonight for approval. As soon as it's approved, city crews are basically working this week potentially to start demolishing, if we need to. If we go for the higher option, if we go for the resurfacing option, then we won't be in there, but we'll be starting with it soon to get the asphalt way down before the city court.
And, and you also mentioned that in your, looking at pickleball courts, there were some things that needed to be done in Pride Park?
Yes.
And some of the other parks.
So something that we've, you know, we've, we've always talked about what we want to do with the parks and the parks around the city. And of course, when we split some one park, we always take a look at what are other parks and how they're doing. Two, these we don't want, just that's number one, especially we have different parks in the city that, well, they should all be addressed at the same time. And we do have a new Parks and Rec Director who we'll introduce later, but we want to give him time to figure out what he wants to do. But in looking at, Karen and I were looking through the different kind of the nature of parks, you know, we had some work done at Gares's place. We've been holding on to that because it needs to have some significance, drainage improvements done. Right now, it's very much a kind of a, groundwater is very high there. If you dig down about two or three inches, you're going to hit some water. And so I'm concerned about the overall structure of some of the places there. Pride Park also, even though we just, we did the bathroom there not too long ago, we did do the stages out there, and there are improvements going on. The equipment itself for the playground is the oldest equipment we have. It is starting to fade, and due to energy, did give us some money to go towards some of the player equipment. We've been working on getting something done, and in looking at this, we thought that this is a great opportunity, that we're going to spend some money on recreation. Let's spend money on recreation. And so coming up, we do anticipate coming to, potentially with, you know, we thought that thirty-five thousand was a good start for this pickleball side. It does give us, kind of budgeted around fifty thousand for when we come, running into problems, as you always do. But then spending an additional maybe two hundred thousand dollars on our other parks that have not had the same attention recently. Gares's place in particular needs some improvements to the ADA, which was never done. The park was completed, but then there weren't paths made, that the same thing that's at Lawton Park. So Lawton has that, that safety surface on the top, where kids can fall down on and not hurt themselves by kids loving. Gares's place needs some more of that, so that they can make a wheelchair access to all of the equipment. So there's several different spots that we've identified, and we're putting together for those, but we were going to request additional two hundred thousand dollars coming up soon, maybe more as we get closer. So that's went into our thinking about these parts, that we spend about two hundred thousand dollars on recreation across the city, maybe up to fifty.
I wanted to ask one other thing. If you would check with the lady that lives next door to Pride Park, she has a vacant lot there?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
To see if you could acquire that property, because as you know, Pride Park builds up really, really fast, and all of the parking is along six trees, and it would make better for that park to be expanded to, if you can acquire that vacant lot. Ms. Wright, what's her name, Valerie Wright?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we have, I've actually spoken to, I believe, her or her son.
Maybe, yes.
And they did have some interest in potentially expanding it. Of course, it's a cost, you know, going into those things.
Well, it's a cost, but we spend lots of cost and.
Of course, no, no argument there.
Well, that's, that's something that we need to reconsider.
Absolutely, and when we talk about this, because pickleball, as we're here about it, and I'm a venture all, in the profession, we're doing big extension for that. So we know that is a consideration. We started going around, we already knew Gares's needed help, we went out to Pride. I'd always written by, I always responded, you know, I've been looking at the stage, but when I did it up close, it's, looking at it, it, it is time for that, and look at it, same on OP, you know, about the other week, we actually had a group come from a venture and head straight from there and go over to Pride Park for their lunch, and utilize that facility. So if it's being utilized here in the week, it is absolutely getting traffic, and it needs to be addressed. I want us to be admirable in this, when we make these decisions. And the ARPA funds, that's going to be a big decision for y'all, how to split those. And we would be remiss, or, and I would be remiss, if I didn't at least mention those other parts when we're making mistake of a decision for that.
Anything else before we move on to the charrette? I don't want to cut anybody off, but just want to keep it moving too.
There was a little bit of, just resurfacing.
That was the, that was combining it with, that was from Talbot, this company that utilizes, they do the resurfacing and the asphalt. As you see, looking at later options, they kind of have working conjunctions, so we tried to find local builders that work on it. The more expensive one was using a local asphalt company than using Talbot to resurface it, because that's a specialized kind of job.
And this was kind of a big thing.
No, ma'am, we were, because of the timeframe, we were, we just did quotes. Now, at the time, when we're looking at fifty thousand dollar quotes or less, we didn't, we didn't need to do a sealed bid or anything like that. When we started getting into the tire resurfacing, that's when it went higher to a hundred thousand dollars, but we didn't have time to do the sealed bid of the R P process. So that's what the bids gave from us, reaching out to as many companies in the area we could find.
We reached out to Bronx Land's.
We reached out to anyone who could do this type of work, is what we did. So anyone that could give us a quote, did give us a quote, it did take some time and some kind of encouragement to get some of these quotes, because not everyone wanted to do this type of job. It's a small job, and right now, asphalting is good, so we had a lot of difficulty getting quotes in for this.
I, I would just like to see those in our packets.
The, the quotes, sure, absolutely.
Yes, but since we did not have big process time.
Sure.
I think that's a big process job.
Absolutely.
And the thirty thousand mark for camera policy, it's not required, but it is. I would, and I wrote that down, if that is the direction on the side to go, I do think we might, we probably thought about, right? We got to go back, because you're absolutely right, that needs to be fair. And I just started on the nature, we all following proper camera process on that. We weren't expecting it for.
They hit six, they, we hit six, six.
We did this on that, so I agree, I agree completely.
That was one question, said, if we do tonight, vote for that, the eight, if we look back.
We got to go back.
You would, you would authorize us to scope to certain amount on it, up to at some point, and then you would go from there.
Yeah, we would need to, we should do a fifteen day, I think, or one would check up anywhere, April.
We run into problems, of course, with the, with the asphalt, of course, getting in at a certain time. We would have to maybe pay for more, and I was talking to Director of Hook Service about what the cold weather asphalting does, and that does increase the cost. Because they do have to suit this different process, correct, for cold weather?
Well, the asphalt, you really don't want to put asphalt down, service the course after December, pretty much from December to March, because you can't have sustained temperatures, and if you get cold weather when you put hot asphalt down, it'll cause it to crack a lot sooner, especially with this thin layer, type F, that's pretty much sand and liquid binder mixed together. So it, the structure of it is not meant for like heavy traffic with cars and stuff, but the cold affects it a lot greater than like a surface course type A. But the main thing was the resurfacing of the tennis court material. The Talbot company will not put it down after the middle of November, because temperatures can't be sustained for it to dry effectively. Plus, you get leaves and pine straw and everything else is falling on the ground, and then if it falls on those courts while it's dry, it retains moisture of under all the leaves, and you'll never get the surface, and they're not going to ensure anything if they put it down after November. So they pretty much will refuse to put it down after the middle of November, if not before. If you start to get colder temperatures at the beginning of November sustained, then they're probably not going to come and do it then anyway. So you're probably not looking until March, April, before anything would ever be done, or should be reasonably done. You theoretically, I guess, could do it for them, which probably would get an inferior product.
I would like to suggest that we follow DOT for calling this, because before they have, and, I mean, you got cold crack temp in there on court after it, you know, temperatures is between forty and thirty, something like that. Forty, and, you know, this is where we are, and this is what we're going to do. But we had some bad things happen when we did not pay attention to specs.
Sure.
Like the veterans museum, as, as anyways, nobody thought about that.
Sure. Well, with we, with the decision we're recommending tonight, we took a lot of, we took that into consideration. We have a timeframe that I laid out for you guys already in the, in the report for you guys. We feel comfortable moving forward thirty-five thousand nine hundred dollar one, because that does take, goes into account. It's laying the asphalt down in the appropriate timeframe, it's getting the tablet to get it in the board, where they will ensure it. So we have an option for six pickleball courts tonight that all's up for turn, falls all the requirements that we need, and gets something accomplished that we talked about doing again, that was, we created a very fast timer. Now, if we go back and want to do the A courts, then yes, we're going to need to pull this back. We're going to need to go through the proper recurrent process, because that's what we need to do. This, this, this costs, frankly, it's kind of rough, as we start getting into the asphalting, okay? So when we start going through that process, that, if that's what the city council wants to do, then we're going to look at this, and then we'll be looking at an able timeframe to get this done, which is fine. It's just that we want to get something done now, and then at the same time, we'd like everybody else to present some more ideas about the recreation ideas. But if we want to get this done now, that was, our task was to get something out here quickly. We got something for you guys for six courts, that'll get us started, so that's what we have for tonight for your presentation.
And I do have one suggestion, and I just thought about, I, I know a lot of the staff know, I'm on, I live in Columbia, I'm someplace travel ball. So every weekend, I live Lexington for it, and one thing we do is we're split over parks. So if we were able to paint the lines, right, at tennis courts, and y'all wanted to hold it, y'all could have two different pickleball locations, can't you? You can't go between them?
It's, it's our understanding that the tennis people have problems, because if you permanently aren't in courts, then they can't hold tournaments.
Oh, that can prolong the whole tournament?
You'd be, you'd be eliminated as a tennis player.
I'll double check on that, but that, that might be the, you know, I would double check on that.
That's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons why we want to try to stay away from that option. We don't want to imprint on anybody else's activities.
I do know that some cities do that, when you, when you would hold that situation, and we do have a right to reserve courts, and if y'all were to hold a tournament and split it up once, if it is allowed, right, we'll see about that. If that was allowed, then we absolutely can, can reserve courts. Not everything's always free play.
I think it would reward us for lines being on the.
And that is a great question, because I, I haven't heard that.
I, I'm not a tennis player, as, as I understand what you're saying, is they can't hold tournaments? And I did know that the high school uses those courts, and that's our outlet for tournaments and stuff.
And that is where they, that's the only one that says to turn this.
You, you correct on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's the thing.
They got funding invested to the high school.
They do, they do, they do, absolutely.
That would go to.
I know a whole lot of public.
Comment, but that's why we, we put the length of the, doing the lines of the court, we do look into a lot of those things.
I, I know a whole, I know a whole lot of comment from the public, but I, I just want to reinforce what Councilman Radick said. We would love to have six courts now, but I'm, as, as President speaking alone for myself, I would much rather take a little bit longer and get to pull eight courts in. It's going to be cheaper for y'all. That's an astronomical figure you're putting out there, but in today's inflation, the way that the economy is going, it's going to go way out, out of sight. And right now, we're, we're breathing, as Councilman Radick said, we're breathing court time in the daytime with the seniors, in the evening with the working professionals. Working professionals don't really have an opportunity, except on Wednesday and Saturday mornings. These courts would be a boon for them, and be a boon for the, for the city as well.
Sponsor that real quick.
So if you put the six courts in, would the grass areas still stand? So that if you had to redo them, wouldn't you kind of mess up your courts taking that middle section out?
We would look at expanding out to the side, for the, the other way, yeah.
You should expand the other way, you'd have to move the light poles?
Possibly.
I think with the A courts, that's what we're going to want, move light poles, go in.
When we move, when we move, everything is being, a lot of things are being removed in this process. I mean, it's, it's a, again, this was a, what we were, what we wanted to do is make sure we had options for you guys. We have eight courts, which is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, as we talked about, and then the thirty-five thousand dollars. And again, you know, we talked about process, you know, we do talk about this in the budget process and what we want to do going forward. So this is, it's just for city council, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to move forward with the other option, with the A court option? That's definitely, well, you guys just have to, I'm excited.
Lights that need to be removed, do they, are they lights for the course, are they not in the right way?
Lights for the court, none of the lights in the runway. This, none of the, the road will be affected, this at all, neither will the parking lot. Again, I mean, it's, it's, we, we're trying to add in some options, and I, I agree that pickleball is definitely a sport that we need to invest in, and I, I think that's pretty evident about what we're talking about doing. It's just whether or not, someone in the city council wants to do it.
All right, please. Let's move on to a charrette.
Sure. All right, so the next option, or next option, the next conversation is the charrette process for the ten acre development forming of the Canal Project, open air on railroad and near the governor's school. We wanted to get an idea of what it would kind of cost. We reached out to the group that had just done a charrette. It was a different type of charrette for the governor's school, to see, since they were in the area, what they thought would be a good idea. They also are engaging with another entity nearby. And so we talked to them, see what would be kind of a cost or budgetary item that I would do. And we spent quite a bit of time talking with them, what are our goals for the project? We talked about a lot of the history of the project. As you guys know, this was, the city has spent about three point three million dollars on buying up this property, three million dollars in buying the property, about three hundred thousand dollars in plans already. And we did put it out for a bid, and we did not receive a bid on it, for whatever reason. And so the option kind of is, we want to start with a fresh start, and one option that is to do that is to do the charrette process, which is charrette, is a fancy word for just a good, you know, meet and greet and talk about what we need to do here. Architects come in and they meet with the public, they have different work sessions, meet with the stakeholders around the area, and they talk about what the people would like to see here. And that involves, it could be regular citizens, the city, of course, is involved in that, the area, entities are involved in that. And so we reached out to the company that was working with them, like I said, and we got a quote that was in about six figures again. So about one point three five, or a hundred and thirty-five, not one point three five, rather, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for a charrette process. And that is about what they cost, especially when you talk, start getting to design, and when you put into, you know, into plan. And that is about what they cost, um, especially when you talk, start getting to design and when you put into, you know, into plan what words were. And so we wanted, I wanted to take a pause here and kind of meet with council and talk about what, um, thoughts you guys had about expending that much money or something like it. If we were to put this out for our queue, according to our procurement, which we would do, um, it would, uh, run probably in the hundred to hundred fifty thousand dollar range. Uh, you could get one, uh, for much cheaper if we tried, uh, potentially. Um, I'm not saying that there are options in the sixty, seventy-five, eighty-five thousand dollar range, but that's what I would anticipate for a budgetary number, a hundred, a hundred and fifty. And so, um, that's where I wanted to kind of get council's idea of, do you want to continue down this charrette process? If that's the case, I would say this is another unbudgeted item. Uh, so I would suggest we either wait till next year's budget, which we're gonna get started about like three months, we're gonna start working on budget again. Uh, so that can be part of our process, or do we wanna, you know, pull the, rip the bait out of here as well? And pay for something here, or do you want us to continue looking for other options or go a different route? So I just need some direction from council, what you guys thought would be the best course action.
Well, Daniel, um, I would like to say we have spent three point three million dollars over there. And council has never actually stepped on the topic together to see what it looks like to see we had, um, you know, um, planned. We never went as council to that location. I would like to see that done before, as, or before we spend enough dollars. And same token, I would like to see charrette process moved on to the sixth street in South Parkville there. Um, as much as we have done on this process, every time we do that, um, this pro- process, South Parkville gets that again. So in, in, in all fairness, we have given everything we can give, I feel like. But we have not laid out of something. So I would suggest that we lay out of something apart and then we do a ride alongs so that council members who do not frequent the South Parkville area can see what it looks like and understand what the people back there in that community feel. Um, it, it was stated, you know, we're, we're working on something else that, um, people want to know about who's gonna be near them and safety and that type thing. We cannot keep the law in South Parkville, we have to go there and look as a pastor and the faculty that we need, staff that we need to be able to see actually what's going on down there. So I would just like to go for the minutes, for that, that we get equal, we get equal coverage.
What I agree, I think we, we talked about with the company, we didn't get a quote on that yet. Um, certainly with the sixth street revitalization project that we're continuing to work on. Um, we have another grant opportunity that we're applying for, actually, this, I believe it's in the fall coming, there already is the fall. But we're looking at doing another, um, taking the comments we learned from our last grant application, reapplying it. But I believe that a charrette, um, in that grant process will be part of that. Uh, we did kind of mention it to the group that we're talking to, didn't get a price on it yet. Uh, because I knew this one was, um, kind of right on the, on everyone's minds currently. Uh, but sixth street definitely is on our minds about what we wanna do and I, I strongly encourage a group visit. I'd be happy to arrange that for council. Um, we're at a bus, we'll, we'll do lunch at Pride if you guys want. We can do P D R T A, they'll, they'll pay for us to go, that's great. Um, even better. And, uh, we definitely can do that. And I do agree that, you know, the history of this project, um, council for the first time since when you guys thought it, just recently paid off the debt, really does have the full range of this thing for the first time since its early creation. It was a separate, um, even though it was an arm of the city, it was a separate organization. The Hartzell Public Development Corporation, who was writing and steering this thing. And, uh, a lot of money was spent during that time. Um, and so when, uh, city council really started to getting really involved as we narrowed the end of it, which was always kind of the plan, was a city council was to get involved and be part of this thing, not a, um, kind of a party to it, a part of it. This is a great opportunity for us to look at this site, see what it can be, what it should be. And I really do think it's a great idea for council to take some time and walk this site, um, really feel the ground because it was, it was a, um, it was a construction site, it may look pretty with grass, but I drive over it a lot because I like to go off, off roading. And that's exactly what it is. So it's, uh, it needs some attention and it is a keystone to our city. It is a piece that connects our downtown to our commercial corridor. And it has, and our, you know, educational corridors, you know, so it really is a centerpiece that does, I do agree with all of you. It needs some attention, but it does, really does need the right attention. I would wanna make sure we do the right things.
And to echo what you said, I fully intend to pursue both this project and sixth street for South Park School in parallel, both in terms of design and planning and execution. Did not get that first million dollar federal grant, but that's not gonna stop us from, from the, let's say, Hartzell revitalization.
Yes, I would be in there for, um, our fund.
Plus we have about one point four left in our money, we are confirming if we have, if we need anything to our FEMA study for a grant, it's been unveiled. Some things have changed. So that's where, when we talk about our offer money, um, with one point four left, we do, that's why we wanna be judicious what we're spending here. Uh, that's why, it's like the previous conversation. You know, every dollar is, is getting to the end of the year.
Yes.
Um, and a lot of cities have already spent their offer money, which is great for them and they don't, things, we've waited. I think that's been kind of to our benefit. We've had a chance to really identify what our, what our needs are, what our things are. Um, you know, we do have, you know, there's two councilors coming on, so there's opportunities there, we have to spend, I'll get it next year anyway. Uh, so we need to start planning for that, but every dollar needs to be kind of really thought carefully up here.
So in South Parkville, there are, and historic public district, there are at least forty streets. I don't know if council recognizes that or not, but there are forty streets off the sixth street. And if you never see it, you can't say that I'm looking in my rearview mirror because you're not driving through there, I'm looking straight through my window. And that's what I see and that's what the people in that community see. So it's not fair to say we're looking out in our rearview mirrors who live there and that's what we see, they, they, everything. And being put off, being put off, being put off. And I just want to assure the residents of that community that they are getting fair and equal treatment because the tax dollars that we collect from the city of Harpsville, council, nobody else may not know it. But that money does everything, everything it sells. For the evacuated housing, it's still that charity that. And we're aware of that and that money does not go to South Parkville. Money goes to everything else that needs to be done. So I just want to make you believe that we do things right and fair and what is just too good for all, not just for some, but all have to be made whole.
Well, I think council, I mean, we're, 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 we wanna work in parallel.
I, I understand that. We, we wanna work, we wanna work, we wanna work. But we've been working, but we keep getting pushed back to the back of the line. Every time we look at something else, it's third public district, gets put to the back of the line again. And I've been on council, next month will be ten years. And I want to see this change, it has to and not continues. And I just want to make that statement. That's my heartfelt passion. And it's something that the city can no longer do. You can't, you can't, just like we spent all the money over there and we haven't set foot on it. You can't spend that type of money anymore and just leave us behind. Then come to, to go along to get along, which we've done a lot of. We do that, but we can't come and go along to get along, get left, get left behind. So just want everybody to understand that. I'm ready.
Understood.
And, um, I was initially resistant to the idea of doing a charrette process for this property of the TVs. But I think Daniel eventually reminded me like you need, we need the input, you need community buy-in. That goes for this and, and South Park School. So that, that changed my mind. It, it's money, it's time, which, you know, stinks, but is it, the, the community input, community buy-in to make sure we're, we're doing the things that our community needs us to do is, is important. So that's why I kind of like flipped my mind.
Yeah, and we need to put our community, community money and tax dollars, we need to secure those payments.
Absolutely.
I only thought that we need to spend money to help people, I'm just curious. We don't need to. Yeah, this, this is the layman's turn. Out of all seven of us and staff, do we need to spend money to go to different areas and help people? That is my thought.
I, I wanna be mindful of that too.
And, and I mean.
A community town hall is a good start, which I was wanting for.
You're absolutely right. I mean, uh, a lot of times people kind of wonder why you hire consultants, a lot of times they pay what you already know. Um, but it's, there, there's a process here and the reason why, and I will just advocate for whatever you bring in as a consultant, there's a number of reasons why you do it. Um, yes, we can talk to people. Um, it is a good idea always to sometimes bring in a third party though. We, this project, as the mayor was saying, I mean, this, this went a long way without a lot of citizen engagement. Um, it went quite a long way. It went through three designs before we really had some, a lot of system involvement had. And so by the time the citizens were able to see the finished product, it decided, decision already made. And so, um, I think that at this point, you know, a lot of political capitalism is spent here, a lot of city capitalism is spent here. Um, this project, um, is the, the former project was known throughout the state. I talked to many people who I said I was from Hartzell and they asked me how that project was going. And I'll be honest, it did not have this great reputation across the state as many people would think. And because of that, I think Hartzville needs to reclaim some, um, uh, kind of some trust here about what we're gonna do here. We need to make sure that we are spending our money judiciously. Um, I don't like to spend a hundred thousand dollars, we'll ignore it. But I think that when you talk about a project at this scale, this importance, you need to have some sort of, um, back end. And if you guys, this is really for you, to have something in your back pocket, say, this is what we did, this is what the people said. We're following what they want here. So it's not on us, it's, we have, you have something in your back pocket in terms of it. And that's always what a good consultant does, he just gives you some ammunition in your back pocket to say, we did spend the time, we took the effort to actually talk to the person. If you go talk to someone without talking to them, it's gonna say, why did you speak to me? You missed me. And so if you put on, you have some, you have some backing there. That's it. Um, but again, we have gone through studies already, to your point. And we do have plans, we kind of have an idea of what we wanna do. Uh, it does need to be some sort of mixed use, it does need to be a dense residential, because that's something that we've been talking about for quite some time. Uh, but, uh, it's up to you guys, what you wanna do. Um, it evolves in your court, you guys have the property, um, we're here to help.
If we wanna be harmed in our in-house resources, like our commercial little state agents or something like that, get them involved and then like Bryson's point, if we strike out, then we can hunt professional services if that's what we need.
Sure.
But I'll agree with him, a whole heart of it, I'm not a big, I'm not in favor of somebody from out of town coming in and telling us what we need to do in town.
Sure.
I know they've got a professional opinion and they handle it every day, but we're here every day.
Sure.
Yeah, and I'd like to see us exhaust our in-house resources until we seek outside.
And that's exactly why I wanted to talk to you guys, because this is expenditure, this is, this is what I need to know. What, what direction does council want to do as a whole? Do we want to pause on the charrette process as you guys are suggesting? We're exhausted all our resources that we have in town. Uh, I definitely think it's great to talk to our local developers, they've offered, they've offered that just in passing with other things. Um, it just ultimately does what you guys want to do. It's your, it's your project.
I, I'd rather see a hundred thousand dollars go to public safety and recreation and conversation. That's just me.
Um, we don't have.
Community town hall.
Yeah, we don't have to pay to talk to you.
Sure.
We have had in the historic public district, we have had some pass work, we have had the, um, CPAT study where all the plans came in for.
Sure.
And we did not follow their advice. We, we then did not follow their advice. And we were supposed to be on the board, you know, it, it just, there's just too much division in the way areas are treated. We, we, we have never seen anything that basically just come to fruition. We, we hadn't seen that.
Well, plan is always gonna be all inside, I, I.
Yeah, so we, we as a council, once we agree, then that's what we need to do. But until you see it and feel it for yourself, you don't know. And if we didn't pay anybody to have a charrette for historic public or South Parkville Minutes Association or whatever else, we haven't seen, um, just books like that for this. But in turn, this came up and it did not, the procedure is not what it was in the end. So I'm, I'm not in favor of spending any funds because we can talk to contractors here and clearly contractors. But with the same token, as I've always been in the beginning, I will not continue to vote for that when our homes and our items suffer with crime. We suffer with evacuated housing that are still getting farmed, fair market that impacts or we suffer with all types of things. And if you've never been, if you've never seen it for yourself, and if you've never talked to anybody, I understand a lot of these are, uh, uh, insured, he has a lot of people insured maybe in that area. But, uh, you know, it's something that you need to lay it on and have the empathy for the people that live in that, that area. Johnny used to say, a rising tide floats our boats. But a boat that has a break hole in the hull, those people have not become land dwellers in that boat. And that have the boats that are sail ready, they sail. But the people that have become land dwellers in the boat with a break hole, when the tide rises, those people drown. So we can understand, everybody understands that.
And thank you for your point. Like I said, um, in, in, in my mind, it's a, it's a dual, uh, dual-pronged development project. And I understand that my push of the South Park School revitalization project is an empty promise at this point. Um, I do intend to put my, my money where my mouth is, I think we all do.
I think whichever way we go to charrette or just using local resources, I think whoever the facilitator is is most important. A lot of community meetings, even though they have a focus of sixth street areas, historic public district, the former canal project. Uh, a lot of people bring, you know, every complaint there is, every pothole, every cracker, salt wall, everything there is. And that gets aired and, um, we need to, the facilitator is very important to focus in on, you know, what, what the meeting is about.
As a talented moderator, a neutral.
Really, you know, I don't want that job, somebody else can have that.
Well, I get, when I get the mayor his agenda for that, he runs it. No, I mean, we can still, um, we can still keep it an organized meeting. Um, you know, we do, I'm familiar with charrettes, I'd have to look into it. It might be beneficial bringing someone who just to help facilitate not to make decisions, but to be part of that, who is a neutral party. I agree with that. Um, but we certainly can still keep it as agenda, keep it focused on the point. So for instance, with South Park School, we would keep it South Park School specific. With the property here, we would keep it on that, maybe drop some maps, give people opportunity to see what they want to do on it. Follow a charrette-like models for it, but then just not pay for it. Um, and so it's maybe staff can facilitate that or just look into it. If that's where we're gonna go with that, then I'm going to start looking at that and then at the same time look at South Parkville too, make it from that, um, finish point. But, uh, it will take a little more time as opposed to going through the formal process. Um, this was already about eleven months process for this company to go through. So, um, but we can probably do it relatively around the same timeframe. So let me look into it. I'll get back to you guys on it, this was just an update, there's no decision board today. Um, but we'll go over there.
Awesome. I'd like to have an opportunity to come, so please, I'm holding on down. And I can read the tea leaves here and I see what you're doing with this. Uh, I gave you a handout of what a charrette is, uh, the last time I was giving out to everybody. I'm frankly surprised that they've come in at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think that goes back to this particular firm. Those are the resources and shows that they've done a charrette, maybe they have it, but doesn't show on the website or any of the information they use to do both themselves. And Ms. Mack, I want respectfully to disagree with you on just a few things. That boat is so different than this boat, boat here, and they both need attention, they both need work. And I think in my board of executives on council, we have talked about six street, you know, the heart of the city. Uh, the very fact that we have three point three billion dollars in this property is one of those things that because you have that much in there, a hundred or two hundred thousand more to bring in the right firm, and I gave the city manager some people who've done these things all over the state, helping people with what happened in here. They thought they had a good plan, but they didn't have enough input into it from everybody else. So they had strapped that on that drawing board, Mayor Riley's foundation down there is gonna drive that process. But a charrette person is much more than a facilitator, if you got the right firm, it's somebody that has a different set of eyes. And it is three, four, five, six buildings, it's not quick stuff, and it's with different groups, like one night you might be on, be on infrastructure, the next night you might be on building design. So it's just not everybody in the same room for three or four or five meetings. So the, the true person who's leading a charrette, uh, is, is geared to understand how to bring all the elements together. And that same thing could be done on this property here, which is an golden opportunity, as the city manager just said, well, we're not good. It's that opportunity to extend your downtown and do so many other things. And y'all heard me say that if we build that out live and we develop it, it creates revenue to do other things in the city. But we shouldn't wait on that before we do things in Butler, which, but a charrette for them would be so very different too. Get somebody to do that, but going again, for, I know we've got people here, but we have our own viewpoints. We see things through the eyes of having lived here. And, and you bring in somebody who, who has a demonstrated ability to do these things and has experience can document to you what they've done, and you need to write it, and you put a search out there and get the right firm in there. The dollars will be leveraged to what we have already invested here, or what we have done, not just in the ground in Butler Heritage, but what we want to do down there. So if you do it right, yes, it costs you money, it brings you things, it'll make you money if you do it right. And you've really got an ambition that all the people that bought into it, that's where the first intention paid. Although, for those of you who do remember, we did have a mini charrette. Everything was posted on that wall right there, probably seven years ago, before anything got drawn out or started out. And we brought people in to present a success meeting, but it was the same coast. At the time, it wasn't broad, it wasn't truly a charrette, it was just, hey, this is what we think. So we did attempt to do that, it didn't work. So we're back to the drawing board. But, uh, you know, I would reach out to our foundations here in town, maybe if money is your only issue on that. We can approach different people here, so, Snowco, that's what we call home in South Parkville. We've got a viral foundation, we have a COVID foundation. And they find some of those groups who care enough about what is going to happen in our two areas in town, in Butler Heritage and this over here, that they might manage with the funding. So before we just close it going, I would just respectfully ask you to keep an open mind there. And explore if money is the issue, and if the process is the issue, that's something that's a little different. But a charrette done properly will be the catalyst, and as it says in this here, when you get your charrette done, that doesn't mean you're done. But it should mean that you've got a great cross-section of the community who has said, this is what we'd like to see. And then you have to get busy and spend some more money, anyway.
Thanks everyone for your points.
Um, mayor, um, I just need to give one of, um, council, um, McGee, I agreed to disagree, agree.
Sure.
I, I sat here, and you started buying those properties at fifty-nine dollars, sixty-eight thousand dollars. I said, wait a minute, how are we purchasing these properties? Where's the money coming from? I did not know anything about the million dollars that had been, um, loaned to the city. That was told to me in the city council meeting. And what was presented to me was workforce housing with, um, maybe a grocery store or something else. It was not what we wound up working with. He came in and showed this down our throats. And so they, they did. You weren't, you weren't on council.
I was involved in.
He was involved, it was Tuesday, it was, it was not correct. When, when a council member doesn't know what is on, on, and to see it go, I was in the meeting. I saw it go from, um, workforce housing to the Nav district with the, um, looking like something in dance. That's why we have been, um, pretty much a laughing stock over the state. Neither, not yet. Um, and I'm saying, I believe, but Dave just gave you, um, some information about what other people in the state have said. And we have been in a meeting where it was inferred not to ever do what we did for that project. So, I, I, we, we can do it whatever way we can do it, but I'm not willing to spend another penny over there until we get some above ground. All the grants that were written for South Hartsville and that are doing things on the ground, that's because it's been so neglected. Now the above ground has been neglected. We went in and took out houses because that was the only way we could get somewhere to leave. But the house that we did not take out, those houses are still paying fair market value for their taxes. And every time I bring it up, it's supposedly a county's, um, fund. But when the city evades or orders to evade, it's up to the city to give that property owner a document that they can take to God. They, the, um, coast enforcement, they send it to the taxes office. Well, the next year, it may be the house is still there.
Well, I, I, look, I just want to make sure we stay on topic and.
Okay, well, like I said, I'm, I'm just agreeing to disagree, agree. He's saying that money that's put over in the Nav district is going to increase taxes, uh, or whatever, and the money's going to fill the South Hartsville, it's not.
Well, I, I think we.
But it could, it can.
It could, but it, but it does.
Budget, budget.
Yeah, it's good, but it doesn't, and that's all I'm saying.
Well, I, I, yeah, sure, not that, but I think we, I think we've got a direction, um, we don't have a, a direct path, but we, with everybody's comments, we've got a direction to finesse this process.
But charrette's still in conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we, we, we are not opposed, in my mind. The current investment though, like right now, I think that pickleball is a great idea, those types of things, to show that direction. I think buying in with your validation, your conversation is a heaven idea. Let's explore that next work session and bring that information back. But the current investment though, I think we go the direction we've already established. But I do believe in the charrette idea, not just this exact moment, and that's all.
Okay. And we're not making a decision, I agree, but, um.
Does anybody else agree that we need to walk it over there? And that he as a council need to ride it over there and do some walking?
Totally.
It's, yeah, the, the perspective from the ground is different from the perspective from the aerial view, so I like the idea a lot. But I would like to move on to the last, the last item.
Well, this is just a city roadmap, because we're in fact by the city. Um, so this is an update on probably one of the, a large project you guys have, that did start first and we have been working through it and all the things that have come from it. Uh, the police cameras, which as you guys know, we, we, you guys offered to, uh, invested five thousand dollars of ARPA money to upgrade and retrofit and revitalize the entire camera system across the entire city. The city over several years is for the, our pickleball friends, for our audience members and staff, we're here too. Um, we had about two hundred and thirty-five cameras in the city, all from different, um, installed at different times, different grants, um, different purposes, different, um, things, some were solar powered, some were not. Um, and so we needed a opportunity to use those cameras to the best of our ability, and they were all in different systems. It was kind of a hodgepodge of cameras. And so we spent two years, um, finding a camera company that could come in and not only upgrade it, but also integrate all of our existing cameras. And we did find one. And we found one that also offered something, um, that was AR, AI intelligence to help us better solve crimes. And so we have been moving through that process. I gave you guys an update of the phases where we're at. We have, don't ignore the, um, one, two, three, five and six, because we're going out of, whatever phase we can do easier, we're going up to a lower hanging group ones first. But right now, we're about forty percent complete, and that forty percent was a big forty percent. Um, the issue that we've had to run into is of course working with our partners who, the power companies, ICDOT, getting these cameras into, you know, right-of-way issues, and of course getting the cameras hooked up to power. Because the main thing we noticed with the solar power was, especially in some of our, um, heavily treated areas, is that some days it's sunny, it can shine you for a couple of days, and then if it's overcast, those cameras go down. And so, um, while solar power's come a long way since they were installed, we want to fix power source for each of those cameras. And that's so they can be able to transmit all the time. And so what we have done is we have moved through the city and, uh, our police department, and I have to give a shout out to John Wilber, who's with our vice department, and Andrew Baffet, who've been working so hard on this, um, to get this thing done. This group has been on site for weeks, they've been working on it three or four days trying to get these cameras done. We do have a, a AI camera up right now that's in our parks direct department, so I can watch, uh, our secretary, Tammy, that sounds really creepy. Um, but I can see what's coming in, coming out, and it track, it's tracking the information. What does it do spatial recognition? Nothing, nothing's stored, it's not Big Brother, but it does help us if something happens, like a kid goes missing, we can find out where those kids are pretty quickly. And where they've been. And so right now, the process of moving from the interior buildings, we're moving out to the exterior. We ran into two problems. Uh, one in particular was in Oakdale neighborhood, which we at one point invested a significant amount of time and resources in to put that entire neighborhood on camera, it's kind of a test program. After we got in there and already installed servers, we found that all the cameras pretty much had to be replaced. Um, the seals had broken, um, you know, they'd done it under initial estimate, so that was an increased cost for the Oakdale neighborhood. Uh, we did add some more cameras to the Byerly park after getting comments back from, you know, council, from staff. Um, they originally just done the initial cameras, but we wanted to add more cameras to the back, to the courses, we've had issues with those type of things. And then the main issue was trying to work with Duke, we thought we could get them to, uh, allow us to tap into their power for free. It was a ask to get that done, but they prefer to have all those things metered, so we had to pay for all the spots for the cameras already metered at thirty-five thousand. Um, we did not put a contingency.
We took what they would give us, but.
They, we took what they would give us, and they've been working with this as federally yet. Um, you know, we didn't throw a contingency on this project, we probably should have, uh, put in something. We were hoping to spend less, but as we started adding more, ran into problems, we did that. And so I did mention, we will have to come with amended, um, uh, potential to finish the project. Uh, if we don't do those things, we're kind of in a rock and a hard place. We have to spend this money to get the project done. There's not really an option there. Uh, but if you want, just take a look through the phases where we're at. Any questions about what we're, what we're doing with it, um, we'll go from there.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, I'll, I'll definitely take, uh, Helsman Braddock and McGee's point here that with this kind of investment, we should have put in a contingency, we didn't. Um, we found some oaths and intentions, but we just need to make sure it's done. We need these things to work.
Absolutely. Oh, no, this, this will make sure it's going forward completely. We'll all be on the same system. Our police have one login to log into the system as opposed to twenty different systems to log into now, it feels like. And, um, what we're doing here is we're gonna be helping to save, you know, to save people's lives and crime, and stop the crime. Um, and this is the starting point, you know, so we have other plans, we've talked about them before, about how we can help enhance this. And the exciting part about this software, the systems, I can integrate those things in. We talked about shot, uh, shot spotters that can do this type of things, working with schools better. Um, so this was the start of it, but cameras was an investment the city put into, and as we talked through it, it seemed like something we wanted to make sure we, you know, got the best out of our system.
Okay. I have a question, uh, as far as the network for the cameras, uh, you know, a question here. Are they pretty much kind of spaced out, concentrated in one particular area or several areas? And also, I'm kind of concerned about the perimeter of the city. And is it possible that the city can work, cover it with the county? Cover around the borough of city, you know, where we have background rate or potential areas.
Sure.
That we can team up with them, that we can access their information back first. Is that under consideration?
So the, the county does not have a system like this outside, um, and you, you're absolutely correct. I mean, the city, um, we've been very successful, I think, in, you know, recent months in trying to really kind of stamp out, push out all of the instances happening here in the city. But a lot of our, of this, issues come from outside coming into the city. We are the big city, there are a lot of smaller communities around us, so people come here to do, to work, play and do crime apparently. And so, um, you know, we, we definitely need to look at our corridors. Um, these are concentrated mainly in our high, the referred traffic areas. We do have them in more of our areas that have issues. Um, you know, ACE three in particular is washed more in particular, Oakdale has the greatest concentration because of the way that grant system worked, and we decided to keep it in there because of its proximity to other areas that we have issues with. And the main thing is our intersections, so when someone comes through, we can at least identify where they've been. There's not many people when they're driving, pretty much follow the same patterns. Um, so we do that. We do have potential to add in later, uh, license plate readers, we're working through that system right now. As you might recall, we talked about adding, it was about three hundred thousand dollar expense. But DOT was kind of giving us some pause on what they would allow on their, in, on their right-of-way. Um, but the camera system itself, once it's fully put in place, and believe me, it's not from us waiting to get this thing done, this has been a labor of love to get this thing done and accomplished. Uh, we do plan on having this done, I believe, hope to have it by next June at that timeframe to get something at least mostly started. I'm gonna push for that at least, to have something in place by next June, have most of this completed.
I'd say well before.
Well before, excellent, that's what I wanted to hear. Um, so once we have this up and running, I do want to have a, um, almost a digital kind of proven copy. Show this to the public, show what we're doing, what it's capable of, do some test runs and show people what we can do with this thing.
And what it's not capable of.
Exactly, and not to scare people, because I understand when you start saying AI official admission does scare people, but.
How long is the data here?
We don't really, the data, I believe, it goes back at least maybe less than a week, I think. Um, it's really not there to, now, we, and this is all on the cloud, we don't carry in the state of us locally. And basically, what happens is if someone's, uh, commits a crime, we start looking through the cameras, but it takes an officer having to search through every single frame to find it. This is you type in a, um, description, it starts to narrow it down for you, is probably what it does. And so we think that a week is plenty of time for us to keep the data now. If we have to do more, I'm sure that might be service, but I don't want to keep the data.
Right, that's a concern.
Yeah.
Prophecy.
And we wouldn't really keep the data. It doesn't keep any type of, um, information regarding their, you know, what they look like, what they drive, things like that, it's just keeping general information.
And I just wanted to, uh, your dad, so I wanted to say, your comment about cooperating with agencies outside the city, we're raising the bar, like, we're raising the state of the art. So I think that the opportunity to collaborate comes in the future. When we can say, okay, this is what we've done, this is what it's doing for us, let's work together to extend and, you know, expand these capabilities.
Um, and if you can comment on a question myself, who might spend thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand more dollars on those poles. Um, I reached out to Duke, as they explained to, to be fair to them, some of their poles are, are decorative, all of their cap plugs on the top of them, and they're just not intended to be a metered situation.
You must have talked to same people I did.
They said, they, they said they just broke.
Yeah, okay.
So to be fair, they're great partners with, they work with a lot of them, so this wasn't them not working with us, it was just these particular poles out there that were pointed. So to be fair, they're great partners with the state, they work with a lot of them, so this wasn't them not working, really, it was just these particular holes out there that we wanted aren't metered.
Our, our regard would be.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just, I just wanted, um, another comment, um, Daniel, can you tell us about how many cams we have now, and how many of those cams are working?
We have two hundred and thirty-five cameras, that is your question? Um, now, um, it's there, right now, we have many more working throughout the city, all the interior ones are working throughout all the city, so I don't know the exact number for you, but the problem was that the cameras that we're talking about, for instance, in a area where we're about to have like a gunshot go off or something like that, those are not working because they're not powered. And so, um, the cameras that we needed the most were failing, and that was the most frustrating thing, because we had instances where something would have happened, and we had one, a very notable one, several years ago, where it was right in front of a camera and was down. Um, so that's the point, is to get those off of that solar grid and put them onto, um, a, a wired network, and so, um, I don't know the exact number, but that number, when we, when this is up, I plan to have them all.
Well, I, I just want to, um, us to be aware and, and recognize, um, over, um, in Oakdale, I think they had a desk over there. And when we get that set, the cameras don't work.
Right.
So how long are we going to get, get, it's going to take to get those cameras done?
That's what we're doing right now, so, uh, you saw in our face report that those meter boxes are being installed currently right now, and once those are up, then we will have those cameras up and running.
Thank you for that update, it's a super interesting project, it's nice to get a, uh, kind of whole list of local points of progress.
One, one of the things, um, Cheryl had blackness like this.
I saw that, they put up, they put their own holes, and those are solar powered, so I wish them well.
And, and, um, Columbia had the shot spot.
They sure do, yeah.
And the chief could not believe how many shots were being fired.
Right.
And not being called in.
Seventy-five to eighty percent of shots that were reported, and I've read that's the exact same thing.
Were not called in.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing.
At, uh, one of the municipal association events, I talked to a vendor that makes, um, speed checkers, license plate readers, and they were running a special where if we do a video and tag them, then we, we might win one, so I think we might get a little video.
Um, and, and the license plate readers, people think that you're keeping intel on them and trying to, it's, it's not that. Um, but the shot spot, it triangulates that shot within forty-five seconds. And we're not able to go there right now, but with the cameras that we're going to be putting in and have them working, we have to make sure that they're working because of the problems that we have with that and other things.
Absolutely, yeah, and upkeep's always an issue, we need to stay, stay focused and not letting, uh, past projects fall.
And also the monitoring.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Well, I think what this does is it shows our commitment to doing that, I mean, it really simplifies things and makes it easier on our staff to do the job we want them to do. And so, um, I agree, you know, whenever you have a grant come up and those things kind of fall off the wayside, we can't just do a ribbon cutting and be done with them. So, um, no, we're fully, when we went forward, it's, we're fully intending to keep it going every single year, keep up, keep up the date.
Well, thank you for the update, um.
Thank you, um, excuse me.
I want to go ahead and go to lunch, I want to try that Japanese place that was on the mountain. Across from the Fairfield, that's where I'm, I'm headed for lunch, but, um, hearing, um, yeah, hearing, uh, no objection, and looking forward to seeing you all this evening, this work session stands adjourned.